She's ready.
She's ready. Is she ready? Okay, so I can go ahead? All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting for the Pecosim Planning Commission Monday, September 17th to order. And at this time, I will invite anyone who wishes to stand and join me in the invocation, which is going to be the Lord's Prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses. When you those who trespass against us, lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine are our power and the glory. Amen. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for the regular session, May 21st, 2018. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes as written?
So move.
Do I have a second? All right, Karen?
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow?
Next team.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of four to one abstention.
All right, we have an audience for visitors tonight, and of course, this is for anyone who wishes to come to the podium and speak on anything except any of the, except the new business. Well, I guess there's nothing on our agenda, so you can come and speak on whatever you like. But as there is no one here to speak, we will close this audience for visitors and move right on to new business, which is the election of officers. And we have got, we're a little bit late in doing this because normally, I believe, we do this in July. So we have not had so many meetings, so tonight, we are having a meeting so we can do this and get this business straight. Anything anybody needs to say, or does anybody wish to comment or make a nomination, or what is your wish? We have a lot of people here tonight, so I don't think we'll have to postpone it.
I'd like to just acknowledge the incredible leadership Bonnie and Bill's Commission for many, many years. And I think without your consistent leadership, support of the Planning Commission, we probably would not be this wonderful organization that we are here. And the need, I think your years of dedication certainly are a tribute to you as personal, as well as your dedication to the town. I am somewhat concerned about an orderly transition looking forward, quite frankly, if when we look at our terms of expiration on our board, but to potentially terms expiring this coming December. We also have potentially four terms expiring one year later in 2020. And I really feel as a responsibility to this organization and commission, having some sort of orderly transition of ownership, which would allow any potential new people to be under the tutelage and guidance of current chair and the current vice chair, which give us time, hopefully, to really groom some good future leaders. So with that, I just wanted to mention that as an opportunity at this point, again, it's being very respectful of the current leadership, but really, the long-term stability of an easy and orderly transition for any person who might want to step up.
Well, I appreciate your kind comments throughout the history of the Planning Commission. I think this has been something that has naturally evolved and through attendance at meetings and paying close attention to what's going on. And that is one of the best mentoring for myself, I know it was. I tried to attend regularly and listen to the wisdom of some of the folks that had been on planning, and I can name off quite a few. One of them was Pelham Phillips and Walt Hill. Walt was a member that I always, I always thought helped me, mentored me, I guess, because, you know, I listened to him. So we have had, and I think the learning comes from being at the meetings and actually participating and seeing what happens. I think it's difficult to know otherwise. You have to, you have to literally jump in. And that's, that's kind of how you, how you do learn with this. I'm well aware and keenly aware, believe me, of the upcoming possibility of vacancies. And I'm hopeful that the city council also is and knows these terms are, some are expiring, and will consult with the folks that their terms are up, and will see if they wish to renew those terms. Or if not, hopefully, we'll have some people put in applications at the Board Bank. And I always tell people on planning, if they know people, you know, and talk to them, and they see somebody that's interested, just say, well, you know, why don't you fill out a Board Bank? And that's, you know, all we can do. The council hopefully will, and they certainly, they do the best they can to interview and talk to folks. And sometimes, years ago, that did not happen. I think that's a really good thing they're doing. I like that. I think probably Libby, you had an interview process, and I don't know, Angie, you probably did, Lee, y'all had an interview process, which is really good. I don't know, as we always did that. But yeah, I've kept an eye on it, and Bill and I certainly, both of us have. We know certainly with our terms up, and we've talked about it, we've discussed it, and things that we could do to hopefully, and I think for Bill and I both, we've had that concern. And the reason probably why we did not maybe retire last time is because we knew there were a lot of new members, and just felt like it was a good idea to stay on for a little while. And, you know, hopefully, by then, we'll have people, when we go off, that will be ready to step right in and do the, do the deeds. Mine is November of 2020. Bill is January 2020. I think Jay is November. You're November, aren't you, Jay? And Gus is November. You are 2020, and you are?
2020, January.
You're January, same as Bill.
Yeah, I think so. I think I am January.
I think you are too, Angie. I think you're January. And you are, you're filling in a term, so yours is a little different.
Yeah.
Yours is this November.
This November?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I think, isn't she, this November, because she was? For Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
Probably about right.
Ultimately, she had Rich Clifton's spot, so I'm pretty sure it's November. I'm pretty sure it's November.
I think it is too. And I think if you, I think somebody may contact you all to, I guess they will probably contact you to see if you're, if you desire to stay on, and if you don't, I mean, you certainly, that's your prerogative. Everybody knows their circumstances and knows, you know, if they can fulfill their duties.
I just want to say a couple things. First of all, I want to thank you three over there and all of your predecessors, because it's been very easy to be on this committee with you guys doing the work that you've done. Every time we need to know something, you guys already know it. It's just been a pleasure. That's made my, that's why I've stayed on it, quite frankly, I think, because, you know. The other thing too, is it seems like, I don't know, we somehow have been able to pull this off, but I've always been impressed by the cross-section of people that we've had here. You know, young, old, and our different occupations, different processes. And I thought, gosh, how can we keep that good cross-section, that the cumulative sum of everything we do is out remarkably well. And I think maybe not every Tuesday, our Monday night, we walk in here, we feel the same about every issue when we start. We had, it's almost kind of boring sometimes. We're always six to nothing votes. I think that's because everybody keeps an open mind, discusses things, and so we get done. I hate to see that lost. And the other thing I'm a little bit worried about too is that I also hope that we don't have this drain, too drastic of a drain at one time. So it's funny, because I don't know how much longer I'm going to stay, but I'm going to say you two have to stay for a little while. I can leave, but you guys can't. And the point is, is that, Bonnie, you do such a good job of, you know, corralling all of us cats, so to speak. And Bill can be here, and Bill always seems to sum up what we're thinking about two words. I'm impressed. You know, I'm blah, 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 blah. And Bill's just like, boom, says something, it's done. So if you guys can possibly find the smoothest transition when you can step down, because we'll miss you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you very much. Well, we certainly will, because we're very interested in, you know, this commission, because we feel, we feel an obligation not only to our community and our city, but we certainly feel an obligation to, we want to do the best we can in every way, just as all of us on this commission do. So anyway...
There's only one more last suggestion. And I don't know if anybody, you know, nominated anybody tonight, or have any thoughts. But one thing, so Angie, since you've joined this group, I feel like you put me to shame. You're so prepared for all these meetings and everything. So if there's ever a spot or somebody that you might want to groom, she does a great job.
Well, I think we have, I think we have a lot of possibilities. And I, and I really, I'm optimistic. And, you know, as you stay on, I feel like you're, let's just say, I think your potential grows. And that's, you know, that's my hope. I'm hoping by the time we leave, we will have somebody who is certainly able to fill the shoes. And as I say, I encourage people, be here at the meetings if you can, because if you're not, if you're not here, you do miss a lot. And that helps you. It helps you to be experienced. You can't, you can't attend, you know, one meeting a year and know what's going on. I mean, you know, we've been lucky. Most of our people have attended very well. We've not had a great deal of trouble with that. But I think the council, are they also thinking about if, have they talked about absence? If it's, are they thinking about doing anything at one time?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I didn't know whether...
They had come out, you know, with the actual sheets, keep attendance. And I think there was some attention being paid to consecutive absences. And I think that is one of the things that they are going to take a closer look at now than perhaps they have in the past. But, you know, I think that the attendance of the members that I'm looking at here is...
It's been pretty good, I know. And we've had some people who've had some issues. I mean, you know, and they couldn't help it, and they've done the best they could. They didn't anticipate it when they took on the job, and, you know, things happen. But anyway... It's going to stay afloat. And it will work out. Don't worry too much about it. I have a great deal of confidence. So I don't know. Do you, do you want to make a nomination? I don't, we're on, we're on, you know, we've got it open here.
Who we nominate, who would we be nominating somebody for?
Well, what we've, what we've done in the past, it's chairman and vice chair.
If your term's up, you don't have to, in other words, you're just, Libby and I have, we're done in November, I guess.
Well, if you're going to stay on, I would certainly say, if you know you're not going to be here, I don't know, as I would...
No, I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly all the positions.
Yeah, yeah. If you know you're going, I mean, if you were thinking that you're going to renew your term, certainly, I mean, you would be eligible to accept a position. If you don't think... I wouldn't do it. I mean, if I were...
That's the only thing I want to mention, is that I kind of don't want to be on, only because I'm, if they were paying attention, they'd see that I had to make a couple meetings, see my health and everything like that. I just, if I can't do it right, I'd just assume all the day. And as much as I'd like to stay on it...
Respect your decision, because as I said, you know, people know more about their situation. That's for them, and we have to respect that. Even though you might not be on planning, you, I wouldn't want you to be on. That's not our desire, because there is someone who will step forward. But we would hate to lose you. I mean, I certainly would.
I appreciate that.
I do. I feel like you're getting to the point that you're, you know, you've been here a long, a long time. I mean, you've been here, I mean, we've had, we've had some that have only been here for a very short time. You've been here a long time.
Yeah, I think it's been about 10 years, I think.
Yeah, and you, and you have... So anyway, but Karen is probably wanting us to, to, tonight, she wants us to nominate a chairman and vice chairman.
Are you able to be nominated for chairman?
I'm willing to stay. If you, if you, if the commission desires, I will, and I think Bill is. I don't know, we...
We'll do one more.
We'll do one more. I mean, until next July. And at that point, hoping, and Bill and I have talked about this, we'll be, Bill would like to mentor someone to take his place. Time being, as we are in a situation where we are... I'd not to say. I mean, we're, we're willing to do that. That's up to y'all.
You guys wouldn't leave at the same time, would you?
It's about 10 months apart.
That's my concern. That's a big concern.
So we're, no, we're, we're not going to leave. It's sprung a little bit there. Be all right. Y'all be all right by that time. We'll have a big farewell party. We'll come to it.
I'll buy.
Well, I guess, first of all, I would like to nominate Bonnie Schreiber as chairman. Is that appropriate?
We can do them all together if you want. And also, you need to do clerk tonight.
Oh, clerk tonight too? And that's Karen.
Well, I'll nominate the existing slate for the next term.
So with that, is that a motion?
I'm making a motion.
So then, if we second, is that, do we second them in parts, or as one pack?
I'm nominating the whole slate. I think that Angie and Lee, I mean, y'all are up and coming, and... I feel like I'm just a novice here right now. I still don't, still trying to find my way, so. But I think y'all have done a fantastic job. And unlike Jay, it's been, we have such strong leadership, so I would like to make that motion.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Titlow?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Travis?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
And Commissioner Griebel, I'm sorry. The one who may be in there.
All right, well, thank you for your vote of confidence, and we will do the best we can to see that things go smoothly. Okay, with that said, there is nothing else on our agenda.
Motion for the clerk?
We did. She was on the slate. She was on the slate. So we have Karen again as our ex clerk, so I feel very blessed at that. And now, communications and correspondence.
Yes, I have two things, and I'll be brief. But the first thing I wanted to do is to give the Planning Commission a flavor of some building permit activity that we did up until basically July. Not exactly current, but it's pretty close to current. We did, well, let me say, let me get the numbers first. We did 2018 permits, 18 townhouses, and 14 single-family homes. Now, if you break it up by district, that is 18 townhouses. The central district.
I can't hear you over here very well.
I'm sorry. I'm not speaking into the mic either, so that's my fault. We did, we did 18 townhouses, and they were all in the central district. You got Rebus Run and some others in that district. Single-family homes, we've done two in the central district, four in the eastern district, and eight in the western district. And that is our building permit information that we have for 2018. I'll give a special shout-out of thanks to Cheryl Miller, who put this together for me this afternoon. So that was, that was good. There's a second thing, and I'm not going to get into it much tonight, but we have had a subdivision that came in, I'd say in the last month or so. And it had a very peculiar alignment of an existing, what we would call a private street. And the question came in is whether they needed another private street, more or less contiguous to the existing private street. We looked in our ordinance, and we noted that we really only have a definition for a public street, which if you read the definition of public street, you get to the definition of any road, regardless of what type, that serves more than one lot, is considered, at the very least, to be a private street, although the language "private street" is not used. What I thought I would do, we have been requested by the developer in this case, and I'll be upfront with you, this is the only time this has really become an issue that I'm aware of, and obviously, I have leaned on people who've been here a lot longer than I in stating such a thing. But what I thought I would do with the commission's permission is ask if, either in a work session or in a regular meeting, you wanted me to come up with some possible scenarios and see whether we really think the ordinance is good the way it is now, or whether it's something we might entertain changing. No pressure, you know?
Well, is this subdivision on an existing private street, or is it one to be developed as a private street?
It was on an existing private street. If you, if you look at the property across the way, that street goes right up to the property line. Another street existed back to a certain point, and then it terminated, and they needed to continue that street along to provide access. But it created some setback difficulties, because the setback from a street, even a private street, is 35 feet, which is actually a break from what it used to be. We actually are a little more lenient on setbacks from a private street than we are from a public street, where we go, in this situation, it'd be 65 feet back from the center line. So, you know, that is a little bit of a break.
Is there no limitation on the width of a private street for multi-development, more than one house?
Well, we like for private streets to have a footprint, if you will, or right-of-way, that it can be made public. But what we end up seeing is that there are a lot of private streets that go in with less than, than that type of right-of-way.
Less than 50 feet? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Right, yes. Sometimes significantly less than.
But a subdivision is allowed on a private street, less than 50 feet? Criteria is required?
We have a definitional exception criteria, where what we say, this is another thing we may get to before too much longer, but right now, we have a definitional exception-type subdivision. It's actually kind of wrong to call it a subdivision, because it's a definitional exception to a subdivision. But you can do three lots off of a public road, or you can do two lots off of a private street, or public street, private street. So that's really where we get there.
Okay, well, you said subdivision, I'm thinking multiple parcels.
Sure, sure.
But you're speaking of a subdivision that's come through recently, that's two parcels? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Well, that's a big difference.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you don't want private streets. Not what we're talking about here. Well, not more than two, anyway. But I thought I'd come up with some scenarios for the next meeting, kind of, you know, draw it out, make it a little bit plainer. The commission may decide it's fine the way it is. Like I say, it hasn't come out very often. This is the only time, I think, and so...
Bearing in mind, and I'm just kind of thinking in my head, that there are probably numerous private streets throughout the city that are in that similar situation, whereby there was never 50 feet. It was perhaps an old car path, maybe it was 30 foot right-of-way, 20 foot right-of-way. And it could be a sizable piece of property that's being serviced by that. So I, I mean, I know that we have to have fire and protection for those, for those properties, but at the same time, I don't think we want to be so restrictive to that it prohibits the landowner from using his property at its highest and best use as well. So I just would throw that out.
Sure, understood.
But the question is, is the private street, is that servicing a legacy property owner that's been subdivided through, or do you know?
Well, what it is, is you've got two properties. Well, you've got one property that fronts on, I think it's Church, Church Street. So that's a public road. They wanted to cut it in two. The problem is, it's very, it's a lot, goes way back, but it's not very wide at all. And it's full of wetlands. So you've got very limited upland area on both of the proposed two lots that they're making out of this one lot. One of the lots has to be a flag lot, and the other lot has got this road coming back off of, which at its terminus actually serves to also access the lot immediately to the south. It's a funky configuration. You could actually argue that this lot is probably not one that should be subdivided, but as we often do, we find a way to say yes. That's what we did in this case.
And the, the rear, the rear lot, the rear access is, there is a rear access to as well as fronting on Church Street?
Ah, yeah, I apologize for not putting this up on the slide. I realized that.
Well, that's okay. Why don't we do it at a work session, or do it, you know?
I was going to suggest that, I think that answering your question, since there are so many questions there, I think a work session makes sense to talk about scenarios, because clearly, we'd have to have a public hearing to change the rules.
Yeah.
And I think we probably ought to have a work session or two to make sure we have it straight before we went into public hearing.
I would agree with that, because there's a lot of nuances to this.
Good knowledge bases can build up with this type of...
Let's look at it and see if we need to do anything, as you suggested. We may decide we don't need to do anything. Let's look at it and see.
But I'll have, I'll, I'll have it pictured, and we can take a look at it.
Sound good with everybody? I think, I think that's what we need to do. Okay, Danan, you have anything?
Yes, I can give the comprehensive plan update for this evening. So city council did have a work session on the comp plan draft on the 10th last week. For those of you, I believe, Bill and Bonnie, you were attending, it was very brief and a very positive meeting. Council was very supportive of the draft. They just had one or two minor changes they wished to be corrected. They are planning to hold a public hearing on the document next Monday, the 24th. Now, they are not going to adopt the document, but they wanted to hold a public hearing to give a last opportunity for any members of the public to offer their comments on the new comp plan. So if there's anyone you know, or if there's anyone who is watching who wishes to comment on the comp plan draft, next Monday, 7 o'clock, council chambers would be the time to do it. And of course, the draft of the comp plan is available on the front page of the city website. Other than that, there are two changes that I would like to note that are probably going to be happening to the comp plan before it gets adopted. City council is probably going to consider adoption beginning in October, barring the results of that work session. The two changes are, one, one of the changes that Councilman Green suggested in the work session to one of the charts in the environmental chapter regarding public water access facilities. We put that to some of our staff in Parks and Rec, and they took some issues with it, and the way it was presented, it was a little inaccurate. So we're working to revise that chart, and the page is going to look a little bit different. So that's one change. The other is that we are changing up the future land use map, and possibly the zoning map, because we are finally depicting the planned unit development mixed-use overlay district, which was passed back in 2013 for the Big Woods. It's what, the overlay district that makes a development like the legacy of Pecosim possible. And due to the way it was passed, we need to put it on the future land use map, and we're going to be adding a couple paragraphs into the land use chapter to explain that. So the end of the comp plan and the map at the end will look a little bit different when it's passed. Those are the only two changes so far.
Shape files, did you find the shape files regarding the...
We made the shape files.
Did you go ahead and make them? Okay.
It was passed, but they never got around to adding it to the official map, so we've done that.
Danan, sorry, that was just catching up the map to what has already been...
To what basically legally already exists.
Yes.
Yes.
Dan, is there, is there any other way we should try to get the word out? If anyone sort of show up, you know, like put something on these marquees? I put so much work into it, I just thought, sure would be nice if everybody knew, you know, that this is their big opportunity if they have a problem or anything. I mean, it's on the city's website, but, I don't know, like on these marquees out here? I don't know.
Sign.
And then the other thing...
All the economic development people.
The other thing, too, is that, interesting, I, when I hear people around town talking about like the legacy of Picocen, lots of people talking about lots of things with it. These people seem to be so knowledgeable, and I don't really think they are, about what it's going to be. Oh, yeah, it's going to be all these. You know, I hear, I mean, how can people, how can the citizens here, maybe I'm digressing here, but stay abreast of how these things are developing or not, and the latest on any changes or anything that's been made to them? I, I don't know, I just, it's funny how rumors will, you know, I think it was like in Sunday school class, where you tell a sentence to the kid next to you, gets to the other side, the sentence is nothing like it was when it started.
You know, a couple of weeks ago, we spoke with some of the folks at Esri, who are the people who make ArcGIS, and they gave us a tour of some of their products, specifically ArcGIS Online, which is a tool for making maps using their own cloud storage website that you can just upload data to and then share links to. I know copies of an evacuation zone map was kicking around our department and possibly around the city during Hurricane Florence last week. That was on ArcGIS Online. But the idea occurred to me that we could try creating some of those maps now that we have the ability to do it for the city. One of those might be a map of the legacy of Picocen development, which could show the general footprint of the development, the proposed layout, and any changes that might occur during the development process. So, it was just one idea that I had. You might want to consider it, that we can make something like that in the near future.
Aaron, anything you need to tell us?
I have a meeting in October, and I should have looked at that date, but I think it's the sixteenth. Is that what we came up with?
I think it is, yeah.
It's early this coming month. We did, sixteen, I believe. Yes.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Oh, it's the fifteenth, okay.
Our office closed that day. I think, I mean, I think that's...
No, that's right. It calls this the seventeenth today, and it's thirty...
Is that Columbus Day weekend, then?
Fifteenth's Monday.
That's a Monday, fifteenth.
Is that Columbus Day weekend? Is that why you're...
Columbus Day is usually earlier than that.
We just closed, because we had...
Okay. Well, I'll keep you all posted, but we're going to say October fifteenth. We have at least one application in for a conditional use permit. We get another one or two, I think, maybe floating.
Possibly, yeah.
And then the work session that Wally talked about. So, we'll be looking at, starting at, what do you think, six or six-thirty?
Just chance to kick it around.
Dan, could I just ask a quick question? When, when subdivisions come through, or like the legacy, and they are approved, who is responsible, or do they actually make it to the GIS website so that you can actually see the layout or the design, if you will, of that subdivision or that project, that mixed-use project on GIS?
That would be the assessors department. They are the ones who are in charge of updating tax parcels, of uploading subdivision plaits and property plaits and deeds, and generally just handling all that information off to a company in Richmond which handles our online GIS maps.
Okay, so it's done offsite, then?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You got anything else you want to say before we close? I'm getting ready to go down the line here.
About that, because it would be an opportunity whereby if the legacy, and I haven't really looked, but if it's already been approved, that project, it would seem to me it would already be plotted on GIS.
This new use permit was granted, the comp... site plan or subdivision plan has been approved yet.
There is no site plan on that project?
As of yet. We are anxiously awaiting. And I'm, I'm confident we're going to get it. It's just been delayed a little bit.
I hate to skip over you, Andy, if you want to say hi. Okay, Angie.
Thank you for the update, Wally. I think that's, that's really helpful. I know that, you know, I get curious about site plans and developments going on around town, so I always call up the office and say, okay, what's going on? What's been approved? What site plan? So, it's, it's always helpful to hear what's going on and get updates and, and new site plans coming, coming around. Just, I think it's really helpful for us as a commission to just kind of have a good lay of the land and, and what's going on. So, thank you for, for the updates. I, I appreciate it.
Even on a night that seems like we don't do anything, we still do something. But I appreciate, well, I think this work session is going to be interesting coming up, because I've always been curious as I've lived here. It's like, there's a house behind that house. You know, so I think this is an issue, that there's lots of odd lots and stuff like that. So, I'm looking forward to that.
No question.
And then on the legacy of Picocen thing, this idea of the GIS thing, it's really exciting to me. I, you know, because that's a game changer. That, that neighborhood is going to be a game changer, name, whatever you call it. And I think everybody wants to really stay on, you know, see what's going, how it progresses.
Yeah, I'd like to say the same. We're going into the twenty-first century. Good public information tools and take the heat off. I'm sure lots of phone calls to the department.
Well, it's amazing what is out there that we can use now without any additional outlay of funds. The hope would be, of course, that as we continue to demonstrate capabilities as a GIS, people are going to gravitate towards it as, as, as a tool that, you know, and we're lucky to have somebody who, first of all, is Mr. O'Connell over there and, and looking. I've worked with GIS before, but I think...